Good morning.
We'll see what they say.
I don't know, it's fine. I thought we'd go ahead and get started here and make sure everybody's ready.
Yes.
All right.
Eight thirty-one or eight thirty-two? Okay.
I will call the meeting to order then. Roll call.
Thank you. Tammy Kruline Bogus.
Here.
Pius Wible. Katina Wilcher. Stephen Sommers.
Here.
Jim McQuire.
Here.
Charles Smith.
Here.
Richard Hilton.
Here.
Diane Marlin. Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Debraun Feiden.
Here.
Patricia Avery. Patrick Brown. We have more.
All right, thank you. See any audience participation? So we will go to our, the minutes of the meeting August 25th. Is there, do I hear a motion?
For approval?
For approval? Yes.
Second.
All right, Steve and then Jim, second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next we have Betty and she will do our consolidated financial reports.
Sure, so in your email you received the consolidated financial reports for August 31st and our fund balance continues to remain healthy. It was 10.35 million as of August 31st. It declined slightly to just over 10.2 million as of the end of September. This reflected primarily receivables under the preschool for all program which is pass through funding from the state. Our receivables totaled 955,000 as of the end of September, increase in excess of over 115,000 in one month. We did find out this week that the comptroller has executed payments for 110,000 in that preschool for all program. So we are anticipating that those funds will continue to flow for the comptroller's office. But that remains one of our issues. The rest of the federal pass-through money is coming through. The preschool for all is the only issue. So we're working hard with the comptroller.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about the financials? If none, do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the financial report for August and September?
I'll move it.
All right. That was Dennis and Charles. All right. If no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Betty, do you care if, or will you please, I know you care, will you please do the list of bills for us?
Sure, so you received the list of bills. There's nothing unusual to report here except the volume has increased because of the startup of the fall Head Start programming. So in the fall, we generally have more activity and therefore more volume in terms of list of bills. But there's nothing unusual to report.
All right, if there's no questions on the list of bills, then do I have a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for August and September?
So move.
Steve, Steve and De, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We will move down on our agenda to our action items. And the first thing on our action item is that we, the nominating committee, which I was the chair of, and anyway, we've met, we met two or three times to look and discuss our new community member. And our committee come together and we had an applicant and we would like to make a motion to invite Rebecca Motley, she's at the end of the table there, to be our new community member. So.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other further discussion? Patricia?
Can we hear a little bit about that?
Pardon me?
Can we hear a little about that?
Sure. Would you, all right. I will let her speak to that.
So Rebecca Motley, I've been in Champaign-Urbana for about 25 years. Went to University of Illinois, got a degree in economics and I have an MBA from there also. I work right now as a community consultant and primarily with the village of Rantoul in economic development. I have two teenage daughters, so there's a lot going on in my house. But I've been around, I'm on the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation Board. I'm the chair of Prosperity Gardens Board as well and also the chair of the Champaign Center Partnership. So I do some stuff around here. But I'm pleased to join this committee and I'll help make sure Chuck gets here on time. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to join you.
All right, we've had a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Rebecca Motley. So without any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Next we have our health insurance for 2018. And Betty, would you care to discuss the memorandum?
So Champaign County has chosen a new Blue Cross Blue Shield Illinois PPO plan, Preferred Provider Organization Plan, for its employees in FY18. And so the premium structure is $788 a month. The bargaining unit staff, the employee portion is $55 a month governed by the union contract. The employer portion is 733. For non-bargaining units, the employee portion will remain the same at $202 a month. The employer will be at 586. That represents a 74 and a half, 25 and a half employer, employee split. There is a in-network deduction, maximum deduction of $2,000 under this plan and $4,000 out of network. The county received a proposal from Health Alliance that was an increase of 4.93% or $320,000. The Blue Cross Blue Shield was a 2.7% increase or an increase of $175,000 over FY17. So that represented net savings overall Champaign County-wide of 145,000 over the Health Alliance plan. So I request your approval for this cost allocation structure for FY18.
Do you have?
I refuse myself during the county board meeting because of a small conflict and I want to get in this call.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the health insurance for 2018?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. The Blue Cross Blue Shield, how does it stack up as far as the local providers being able to service the employees?
Sure, so the current Health Alliance plan is an HMO plan, which means that you need to designate a primary care physician and you need referrals to see a specialist. Under this Preferred Provider Organization Plan, you can choose your own specialist, your own provider. So if you need to go to Mayo Clinic, you can choose to go to Mayo Clinic. What it does mean on local level is that Carl Primary Care Physicians are excluded from this plan. And so the county has worked with Christie Clinic and they are able to accommodate, again, those would be in-network charges. If you choose to see a primary care physician at Carl, you would pay out of network. So, and they've indicated that they have capability. That will affect about half of the total employees countywide. And apparently they are able to accommodate, they've started that transition already. But it does affect the primary care physician capability which includes, you know, a general primary care practitioner, a pediatrician, an internist. You will need to use another provider other than Carl because they don't accept this plan.
So those who are Carl affiliated now are going to have to find new physicians, new providers for everything?
That's correct, or they can pay the out of network.
Do we know how much of an impact that is on our employees' out-of-network numbers goes off?
Again, I think it's about half, half of our employees. So this was communicated to the staff because the county has a labor management health insurance committee that is very extensive. So this was, that was an issue that was discussed and that's been a stumbling block in the past. But I think with regard to the cost savings and the fact that this was a PPO rather than HMO, policy made it very attractive for the members of that committee. And Steve is on that committee, so perhaps he could speak to that.
Actually, the county had previously had a PPO and had lost that due to an effort to try and keep costs at a more sustainable level for the county. So this actually puts county employees back at a PPO where, I think the last two years perhaps, they had, we'd moved to an HMO. The primary care folks for Carl are affected only in Champaign-Urbana and Mohamed. If you go outside of that area, Carl Primary Care are covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. Which sounds a little odd, but I think Carl's been interested in protecting their market share.
Has there been any pushback from the staff that will be affected?
Well, our internal staff won't know all the details about this till it's approved by this board. However, the staff has received information and will receive packets because it's open enrollment for everyone and you have to sign up under this new plan. But Blue Cross is offering a lot of incentives for this program in terms of more electronic processing of claims, more state-of-the-art ability for it to be a seamless process for the employees. So it'll be a transition for sure.
Diane?
Just wanted to let you know that City of Urbana employees went through this transition last year and our employee insurance committee ultimately decided that we would go with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we made, they made the transition last year and it's actually, it's worked out pretty well. Our increase this year is 4% from Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that follows several years where there was, basically, our rates were flat. So that was the best we could do this year. But it has gone pretty well for the employees.
I was just gonna say, I went through this transition and it was fine. It was seamless. I've been a Carl patient my entire life until this year, but we're Blue Cross Blue Shield and I, their providers were not in the network. And my care at Christie's been great and they were very accommodating with the transition. We didn't have any problems getting appointments or getting doctors. And it takes a little bit of work to get it set up, but it's, it's not a big deal.
Steve?
We did receive assurances from Blue Cross Blue Shield that there would not be any issue despite a fairly large influx of additional patients for them to manage that in terms of going through Christie and other providers.
I just, I had just one quick question. Just approximately how much is the difference on the, say, your primary co-pay in-network and out-of-network? Is it, is it a substantial amount or is it huge? Okay, I was just curious. Yeah.
I can tell you that the thing that finally made me get myself red, take care of everything at Christie was that a physical at Carl with my primary care with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I paid $1,000.
Wow.
Because, and, because they weren't considered an in-network doctor.
I was just curious.
So you're gonna wanna make the transition.
Yeah, well, that's why I didn't know if it was a small amount or, but that's large, yeah.
That was our, that was our portion of it, not the any, not any of the, so.
So in response to that, a primary care office visit under the in-network would be a $25 copayment. The deductible does not apply. And under the out-of-network, it would be a 20% coinsurance. So it's, it's significant.
Right, I was just curious, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, did we already have a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Next on our agenda, we have our Head Start and Early Head Start report for August and September. And Brandy will have the report for us.
Since the last meeting in August, our Head Start program has been very busy with training employees, beginning in the new school year, preparing grant applications, strengthening partnerships and building new ones, and so much more. In addition to the information you received in your email, I would like to share with you a few of our Head Start highlights. In September, we received the announcement that our program will have a federal review for our Head Start, Early Head Start program between October 2017 and August 2018. The monitors will need to interview members of the RPC Board to share their experiences and responsibilities as the governing body for our program. After the meeting today, please let me know if you're interested in participating on the monitoring review and participating in the process itself. Once we review our, receive our announcement, I will share the monitoring dates with all of you. Also in September, we received notification of a monitoring visit from Illinois State Board of Education that will occur between October 31st and November 17th. The monitors will review the preschool for all expansion classrooms in Savoy and at the Urbana Head Start Centers. Also, one of our Urbana Head Start parents, Jada Kilduff, became an Illinois Head Start Association Parent Ambassador. Throughout the year, the parent ambassadors within Illinois received peer-to-peer and advocacy, sorry, advocacy training to learn the basics of government and specific pieces of legislation, and also how to contact their lawmakers, provide an effective testimony and effectively engage parents in their community. As a parent ambassador, Ms. Kilduff has begun the advocacy journey for, or by meeting with lawmakers in Springfield and contacting our local officials here in Champaign County. On October 18th, we were honored with a visit from Congressman Davis, Rodney Davis, at the Urbana Head Start Center. Congressman Davis toured the center and the classrooms, met with staff and children, and spoke to several children and families. This was a wonderful opportunity for our program to show, for our program and our families to share what Head Start can do for children and families. It is an important, it is important to note that this visit was scheduled by one of our Head Start parents from Rantoul, Kyle Hubert. He is a strong advocate for our program and, and Head Start overall. Mr. Hubert served as an, as a parent ambassador last year and is now serving as a parent representative on the Illinois Head Start Board Association, or the Directors Board Association. I would also like to thank Delitzo for meeting with Congressman Davis and encouraging him to visit our centers. And it was a great visit. So that's what I have today. I do recommend that you approve and place on file the August and September reports.
All right, do I have a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start and Early Head Start financial and service reports for August and September?
I can do that. I'll make that motion.
All right, Dennis makes the motion.
I'll second.
All right, Jim, second it. Any further discussion?
Can I just have a question?
And I apologize, I should've asked you ahead of time because I don't know if you'll know, but with the attendance averages, I wondered how that compares to either public schools or, you know, other big players, you know, that same age range? If for average or if for below, do you know?
For average, but I can get you some more information, more detailed information if you'd like for the next meeting.
That's fine. I just, I was just more curious than anything because obviously when school starts, it's really high and it starts to drop off throughout the year. And I, I just didn't know if that was.
Well, in this particular report that you have, this is a reflection, of course, of all of the months from last year. And towards the summer months, we have children going on vacation. We have a lot of families going back to their home countries. So we do, and those, and those can last for months. So that really does affect some of our, our attendance rates. And also we have children moving on to kindergarten and some of those children move on in July. So, so that does affect our attendance. And then enrolling new, new families and getting them placed. So it, in the summer months, it does fluctuate quite a bit. You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our program division updates are next and we'll start out with Betty.
So we have just submitted a proposal for a SNAP to Success program with the Illinois Department of Human Services and the USDA. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Under this pilot project, which would be piloted in the state of Illinois, it would leverage public funding with private funding and focus on the healthcare industry and targeted toward entry-level and mid-level skilled healthcare positions in our community. So the funding would, is, is a partnership with Carl and it will be focused on, they're currently existing academies expanding. They currently have 500 open positions at Carl and can't secure participants. So the focus of this program would be to leverage private money with public money to help achieve, to help SNAP participants achieve full self-sufficiency. So it would be introductory training, on-the-job training, paid training, and then a potential permanent position. So it's a, an exciting proposal. The state and the feds have approached us about this. Carl was a willing participant and we're hopeful that we'll be successful in terms of this pilot project. It's very new. The parameters of this are still undefined, but I think Delitzo can speak more to the background about this. But it's a new initiative and it, it coordinates well with what Tori and her group are doing in our workforce development project already. It would just expand the type of training available to SNAP eligible participants. The second thing we're working on are staff performance evaluations and we're gonna develop those along with a, our salary plan for FY18. We'll present that to the board in November. We're also working with our WA staff and board partners to advance the new business-driven strategies for workforce development in that regard. Rita and her team, we're going, are going to develop a comprehensive four-county labor analysis. So we're gonna be collecting data from businesses in Champaign-Puyatford and Iroquois Counties which are in our four-county WA area. This will help drive strategic business decisions and assist in economic development and assist businesses in deciding whether to make strategic expansion or relocation decisions. So we're gonna take a look at the existing availability of the workforce, the characteristics of that workforce, and then what businesses are gonna need both now and 10 years from, from now. So Rita and her staff, we've developed a scope of services and a timeline to conduct this study. It's gonna be very comprehensive, but it's responsive to the federal guidelines which are that workforce needs to be business-driven and develop business-driven strategies. So we're really excited about that. It's gonna be a, a long-term study. It's probably gonna take us two years, but I think once we do that, it's going to, again, blend what we're doing in economic development with workforce development in our region, which is key to our growth. And so we look forward to that. So that's what we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Couple of questions. One is, do you have anything in writing on the Carl program that you could share and could you just email that?
I don't have, I just have email information and the, the USDA and the state are gonna meet with us to follow up on the proposal that we submitted last week, so.
So you do have a proposal though?
We have a proposal, but it's very preliminary, so, and it's subject to their review and how that's gonna be. But it's, again, it's, it's leveraging public and private funding, but I can share that with you if you'd like, absolutely.
And then on the labor analysis, I don't know if you've been in contact with Chamber and EDC? Because I think they're in the process of doing the same thing and so I'd hate.
Not exactly the same.
But, but maybe they can, I mean, I'd hate to do two things that are almost identical and spend the money in both agencies, so.
I've been participating at the Chamber.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, I got the green light. Does it have a component for apprenticeship and also in that a diversity part? And there's been a lot of discussion locally about that too.
Right.
We'll be doing socioeconomic analysis of the data, but what we are trying to do is a survey of the companies, asking for the details about the number of employees and all that. And with that, we'll also be doing for interviews, asking people their ability to work, their skills, and the possibility of changing jobs if there are opportunities in any of these programs. Then we are in the process of developing the survey, but this survey itself, it will not do a.
Asking those specific questions, we'll look at the socioeconomic aspect from census data and all that. And we'll be touching on it, but not in detail at this point in time.
And it'll be sector-focused. So at the federal level, the sectors are, and then the state, frankly, their focus areas are on IT, education, healthcare, manufacturing. So we're gonna try to compile this data responsive to all of those primary, and of course, in our community, though, that, those are, those are the primary key drivers of our growth.
I, Rantoul has been asking for this information for a long time, so I'm thrilled. Anything we can do to help with that, you know, regionally or whatever, please let us know.
Patricia?
The, the purpose of this collection of data, data is to look to see if we can develop a plan that will help us economically, developmentally.
So, so one of the purposes, well, the primary purpose is that the new federal regulations under the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act requires that our workforce program be business-driven and not just customer-responsive, but to find out what businesses need both now and in the future so that we have a skilled workforce in the years to come. So identifying what we have now, what characteristics and skill sets we need both now and in the future. So it's driven by both the feds and the state because that's how our strategies need to be. It needs to be a fully integrated system, but they want it driven by businesses. That's, that's the initiative and that happened with this new WA legislation.
So it's business-driven. So the, I guess I'm concerned or interested in what Jim was saying in terms of being business-driven and in terms of looking at where we're going in the future in terms of our jobs and economic development. How are we preparing the workforce for those businesses, those jobs? And if we're not looking at the data in terms of race and ethnicity, then that's going to really leave out a lot of folks because the unemployment among minorities is triple that of its white counterparts. So how are we addressing, going to address that workforce within that? If you're not looking at that data.
We'll be looking at the socioeconomic data. What will not be asked in the companies is specific data regarding their employees in terms of ethnicity or race, because that's data that is private, that they will not share. And we, we know that from talking to other agencies that have done the same kind of work. Then we'll look at ethnicity and race and we'll know the level of unemployment based on national census and ACS data by not asking directly that question in the survey, because we know that it's information that is not going to be provided.
Can we ask and just let them not provide it? I don't want to.
We can ask the question, but from talking, we have been in conversation with the Iowa workforce and they told us that sometimes asking those kind of questions may, these companies avoid answering the whole survey. Then if we want to get a good response in general, general terms, then it would be better not to ask those questions. And they told us it would be probably better for you to look at the ACS data, that's the community survey data that is released every year, and look at the trends, look at what is going on, probably having, and that's why we have been contacting EDC to see if we can. to see if we can attend the roundtables that they organize and talk to the companies and get a better sense from the companies about what is going on, but not asking that specific question in the survey.
One of the things we could do probably is maybe do a separate study to look at how minorities, particularly in our community at large, are impacted with having access to work and how we can plan to address that. I know that I've been approached by other members of the community that are interested to see minority participation in not just workforce, but also procurement, construction. I know the university has done their own study. So that's something we can look at maybe separately from this particular study to address this particular need so that it's not swallowed up with the other data that's being collected as part of this study. So I know I have an interest in that, but, and I know I've been approached by other members of the community for us to explore that.
So I said, Rantul's been asking for that data, and one of the reasons we've been asking for that data is once we have the information from the companies on what they're doing now and hopefully some projection about what the skills they need, then the conversation's with the education side, right? So the workforce development, the skills training, the how do we include more groups of people in getting people ready for the jobs that are coming that aren't here today, but five years from now? So that, that's really what we're after, so our high school in Rantul can get ready and Parkland. So I think that's one of the values that we're going to get out of this information.
We're about two years in front of this program already in anticipation, because we have a lot of soft skills in Rantul, and we're trying to enhance the lives of all of our citizens by making it possible for them to have better employment. So we've actually gone to the schools, to the high school in particular, and they're, they are, they have 76 maps, career maps for students to follow to get either through vocational occupation or to attend college. So it's called a six-year plan. So it would be four years of high school, two years of college. This would fit well with what we're doing, and we may be able to assist you, because we are in front of you on this one. So please make contact with us.
I have been working with Rebecca on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all right, we'll go to our next report, which is with Becky. She has our human resources update.
Good morning, everyone. The personnel transactions report, including the packets, reflect recent staffing changes throughout OPC. We are currently working on multiple recruiting efforts nationally, locally, for attracting qualified teachers for our Head Start program. We have had some success recently with additional recruiting efforts, including working with ZipRecruiter, which is going to need a response as soon as we post that job. A hundred job posting websites light up with our job ads. Those, I, please don't ask me to quote all hundred job posting boards, but some of those include Google, Google, Lensa, Jobcase, LinkedIn, Jobleads, Indeed, and there's one called Juju. I mean, there's just a lot of them. Also, the NAACP. We recently initiated a collaboration with Lakeland College. That college in Mattoon has 100 students. I went into their classrooms. They are very enthusiastic. The director of the division is very excited about their current class of students going into early childhood. We will go, be going back to Lakeland next week, doing presentations in their classrooms and developing a very intentional and structured approach to hopefully getting a hold of those students to want to join our Head Start program. So things are going, that we have some positive trends with these recruitment efforts, and we are hoping to get this wrapped up very quickly.
Thank you. Any questions for Becky? All right, our next report is with Lisa, with our community services.
Good morning. Actually, rather than a report, we're going to do a presentation on the Workforce Development Services. And we understand there's a lot of questions about what we are doing and that there's obviously some other things that you may want, but we thought we would start with an overview, get feedback from you, and then we can provide more data specific to what you're looking for or, you know, more intentional information about what you're seeking. So we're going to do a quick, Torianna Roan is our program manager for the workforce, and she's going to go through a presentation.
Hello. Getting the PowerPoint together, but again, my name's Torianna Roan. I am the program manager for the workforce development under Lisa's division, and I have been the program manager now for three years. I'm a vet program. So Betty kind of talked about, a little bit about the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, and so I will go over that a little bit in the presentation. But just to give a, a basics of where we are. So we're located at 1307 North Mattis Avenue. Oh, you were doing this.
Got to warm up, I guess. I apologize. I thought it would come right up.
No, that's okay. I can go over some of the stuff. And then as we kind of go through it. So we are located at 1307 North Mattis Avenue. That's the Illinois Worknet Center. So we do serve four different counties. That's our Champaign, Ford, Iroquois, and Puyatt Counties. Nope, it's fine. There we are. Again, we are open Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. We do have offices in all four counties. Our Puyatt County office is only open, Puyatt and Ford are open Tuesdays and Thursdays, part-time. Basically, the 9:00 to 4:30 p.m. But our Iroquois County office, as well as the Champaign location, is open Monday through Friday, basically 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. So again, speaking on the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. So that act actually have been, it was rewrote in July of 2014. Formerly, the program was called WEA. That might have been familiar to some people, or you might have heard of JTPA or CETA. Any of that rings a bell, depending on kind of how far we're going back, but. So we are now newly formed, and we're WEA now. So again, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And so the act is basically designed, obviously, to empower individuals and train people in high-demand occupations, some of the lower-skilled workers, as well as servicing our business community. And so that is kind of some of what Betty talked about in this study that we're trying, that we're trying to do. So we're just needing to try to build that workforce now so that we can prepare them for the needs of the business community in the future. So that's basically the, the goal of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. So what that consists of, the Illinois Worknet Center, is what we call our one-stop center. And so in the, the WEA Act, it talked, there's 14 other partner programs that are required, you know, federally to participate in the system, is what we call the one-stop system. So there's four core partners that are located in the building. We're required to be together. We're required to work together and integrate our services so that we are better serving the community. And so that program is Parkland College. Their adult education is located physically in the building. The Illinois Department of Employment Security is located in the building. We have our program, which is the WEA. We call that the Title I B program. And then the Department of Human Services, DORS, the Division of Rehabilitation Services. So we all kind of have to meet and make sure we're serving the different groups and populations, the disabled population, the veterans. You have your low-income, your youth. And we'll kind of get into some of the specific targets as we're kind of go on in the presentation. So the service is offered, that facility is open to anyone. Anyone can come into the facility, utilize, we have a resource center, so they can utilize the computers, and they can search for jobs. We have copiers, fax machines. We have even phone lines, sometimes for people that don't have a phone and they're waiting on a job to call, or they're needing to call and check on a job. So they can come in and do that at any time. We're always available to help. So that just kind of goes over some of the different resources that are available. We coordinate and work with IDS to host monthly hiring events. So that, that happens the third Wednesday of every month. We put together. Try to do a good mix of those employers. So again, I kind of went over a lot of that, of what they're able to do, the customer services. They can kind of search and apply for jobs and network with other job seekers. And we always have a lot of resources and information. We, our front desk person is always looking on the different sides, seeing what jobs are hiring. We're, you know, we're putting together books for, for the customers that are kind of coming in. So those are what we call kind of our basic career services. However, then we have more individualized career services. And these are the services that they can actually apply for, and they can receive that one-on-one, you know, case management service. So just to talk a little bit about first, the eligibility populations for our services. We do serve adults, and so that means they can be 18 or over. We have the low-income, and then basic skills deficient, meaning if they score under a ninth-grade level, then they're automatically eligible for our services, regardless of income. So that, that's one way we can make someone eligible. Then we have our dislocated worker group. Those are folks that have been laid off from a job due to no fault of their own. So we go through a lot and deal with what we call our rapid response. And what that is, is we're, right now, we're in the middle of one with the Patterson Supply Company. So we're aware of a layoff. What we do is we contact that employer. We make, we have an initial meeting, and we kind of meet with them and talk about their workforce and, you know, and design basically a package for that group of folks. And then we go in and do workshops for them. So this most recent time, we had IDS involved. We had the Department of Insurance, so to come down and help them through the process of losing their benefits and what's available to them. And then we design, we present to them our services. They're automatically eligible for our case management services, as well as training. And then the last group is our youth population. So that's, we serve in-school, out-of-school youth, age 14 to 24. And I'll go through kind of more specifically each of those, those groups. So our docs and our dislocated workers, we kind of lump them together. There, we basically help them with their job applications, filling out, helping them with resumes, mock interviewing skills, job retention, the hidden job market. We're kind of, I kind of explain to people when they come in, you know, you can utilize the services by yourself, and that's fine. We're there, it's there for that. But if they're working one-on-one with a career planner, we can then sit down, do an assessment with them, figure out what their interests are, figure out what their aptitudes are, and then also what skills they have so that when we see an employer that's hiring for that particular skill, we can then directly refer them to that employer, and it'll be kind of a good fit for them. So definitely try to see, have them see the benefit of actually working with a, a career planner in order to get back to work as soon as possible. So obviously, that was the career side. So we have kind of two sides to our program. Basically, the basic career services for those that are wanting to just go right into work. And so we're basically working with them through like a job club, and we're getting them those soft skills and different skills that they're needing to go right into work. Then we have those that maybe have no skills at all, and so they're needing training. And so we can pay for a two-year training program, up to two years, for the individual in a high-demand occupation. And so we are focusing on, we have a, our own board that actually, look, every year, looks at the different training programs that we're deciding to approve on our approved list. And we kind of analyze data to look at the number of job openings in that area and be sure that that, that's high growth. We utilize like the IDS, LMI data, a system called ONET, and just kind of looking at those different trends. So it's really good that we're now going to have this business, you know, study survey so that then we can have both sides of it. So we can look at what, you know, the LMI data is saying and the trends are saying. But now, what are the businesses saying? What are they needing? So then we can strategically plan for where we're needing to focus our efforts and what programs we should be training people for so that we have that skilled workforce in two years or four years down the line when the employers are needing that. So that's an example of the two pieces there. Just talk a little bit about what the training assistance consists of. We do pay with, for their tuition, their books. Also supportive services. So if they're needing transportation back and forth to, to school, we can pay for their mileage reimbursements. We can do childcare assistance. We try to work really closely with Head Start as well to try to get people placed over there. We've been newly developing that partnership, so they're right there at our fingertips. And then we have, we can also, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. So it's childcare, yes. We can do the childcare supportive services. Sometimes we can do one-time, you know, rental assistance if it's a barrier to training. So anything that's kind of a direct barrier to their training, we can kind of assist with that. Just our referral process, we do, I mean, a lot of our information is learned by word of mouth. I mean, but we, we do have participants attend an orientation. Our orientations are held on Mondays and Wednesdays. They're held Mondays at 2:00 p.m., Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. And, or that they can walk in, or they can call and, you know, put their name ahead of time. But through that process, we kind of go over all of the different services and the application and how they basically can apply to the program. After they apply, they do go through like testing. They would have to go through some basic testing. And like I said, we do the assessment. We use a tool called Career Scope. And that tool actually, it kind, it's a computer-based tool that looks at their interests and aptitudes, and so it compares that. So we can say, okay, we see you're interested in, you know, being a nurse or something like that. But then with the, but you hate blood, or you know, the aptitude. We have to kind of match up the, the different skills and, you know, where they're needing to be to try to coach people into the right direction so they're not in a occupation, you know, a year later or two years later that they hate, absolutely hate. So it's a great tool for our case managers to utilize. With our youth services, so we do, there's the new, under the new WEA, there's a focus on out-of-school youth. So that's switched tremendously from the previous law, which focused on in-school youth. So we previously had to spend at least 70% of our in-school youth, of our funds, on in-school youth. However, that has switched, and now 75% of our funds are to be focused on the out-of-school youth population. So those who have dropped out, or they graduated, but they never entered the workforce, they never continued with the training, and so they're really wanting us to focus on that group and follow up with that population. So there's 14 elements that we're required to provide to this group. It's a lot, I'm not going to go through and read them all through, to you, but just it gives you an idea of the type of things that we can. A lot of intensive services that we are allowed to provide to, to the youth. One of the things that we do utilize is the paid work experience. So that's a way to, we can place these youth with employers, and we actually pay for that youth wages while the employer is, you know, giving them the training or the experience, basically, for those that lack that experience. So occupational training, again, financial literacy, entrepreneurial, entrepreneurship skills, mentoring. I mean, it's a lot of services that our case managers are providing to the youth. A lot more intense services than, than our doc, adults, obviously, because a lot of them either left high school and they, you know, they lack those basic skills, and so, or they're out of school and they're, you know, with our out-of-school youth, they're very transient. So it's a lot of, you know, trying to locate and find them and be sure that, you know, they're staying engaged and we're keeping them engaged and getting them where they need to be as young adults. So one of the things, as I said, with all the services we provide, we decide to contract out a portion of our youth funds. And so we do put out an RFP every year that kind of the providers have to apply to and basically to provide the 14 elements that I saw in the previous slides. So we've had long relationships with all of the providers that you see here. We do try to do recruitment to see new providers, but I think we have a good mix of current providers. Cunningham Children's Home, they're dealing with, you know. Cunningham Children's Home, they're dealing with, you know, a really tough population there. We have Parkland College Out-of-School GED Program. Um, the U of I Principal Scholars Program, they're focusing on, you know, mainly, um, post-secondary education, whereas Cunningham focuses on getting their kids jobs more so because they're, a lot of their kids, they need to work and maybe they may not be able to be successful in a, uh, post-secondary education setting. Um, so we have Ready or Urbana dot Ed and Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. Um, so I do have a case manager that oversees all of these providers and we meet with them on a regular basis. They all have different programs. So, um, we, our case manager is really responsible for working with that youth and finding out the best program for them. It may be that they're in the Parkland College GED Program, but the way that program is set up is just not, you know, doesn't work for that youth. And so we may transfer, we have options to be able to, hey, let's try to get them in Urbana dot education. Maybe that program is a better fit and more, you know, for them, for that particular youth. So we have a way that we can kind of, um, you know, ensure that that youth is going to be successful, um, working with these providers. So, um, the youth can access our services through our regular one-stop center or they can go directly to the providers. Um, so if you guys are familiar with any of the programs and you, you know, have a youth in mind, you can send them to our center or to that particular provider. They will get connected either way. Um, all right, our trade services. So just to go over that, the trade adjustment, um, assistance, that's an act that actually benefits, um, workers who have lost their jobs due to, uh, the impact of international trade. So that means that their employer is taking their operations overseas or that particular, um, that particular occupation overseas. Um, so some recent events, for instance, AMDOCS, they moved some of their, um, call center, a portion of their call center overseas, um, to India, I believe it was. So those folks were actually laid off and out of a job. So we were able to bring them into the program, yeah, and, and serve them. Um, the biggest one, Mitsubishi, that, that facility closed completely. And so that did have a direct effect on us because we had other manufacturers that actually, um, serviced that plant. So Eagle Wings, for instance, had folks that were, it was about thirty-two, I believe, um, people that were laid off. We were able to service, uh, a lot of those folks. And what the trade program does, it's really unique because it pays for all of their training, kind of the same thing as the Title I. But it also pays for what we call TRA benefits, um, Trade Reassistance Act, I believe is what it stands for. But while that person, if that person decides to go on to training, they can receive unemployment benefits throughout their duration of training. So that's a, a good, yeah, incentive for a lot of, um, those folks. Because a lot of people, when making that decision to go to training, it's like, how am I going to support myself? And so, you know, that, that's a good, um, benefit for, for trade, um, as well as what we call RTAA. So that's for workers that are over fifty, if they were laid off, um, due to, affected by trade. They can also receive some unemployment compensation if they take a job that is making less than, um, eighty percent of what they were making. Um, then they can receive, um, monthly, uh, stipend up to, for up to two years or ten thousand dollars, whichever one comes first. So just to kind of help them get back on their feet with adjusting to that lower wage. So that's a really, um, neat program there. So that was all our individual job seekers and customer services. We then have our business services, um, piece. So we have some unique things that we can do for businesses. Um, and this is actually, I've been getting a lot more calls, so the word is getting out, I think, um, about some of our services. Uh, the first one, incumbent worker. So that allows us to be able to train current employees, um, and help them to increase their worker's skill level and, um, avert layoffs. And that could be different scenarios, what that looks like. Maybe there's a new product line that an employer is having to implement and he has to get all of his employees trained on that particular product line. And so we can go in and help that employer pay for that training. Um, or if there's something they're having, um, you know, they're not really profiting in their business and they're needing to, um, you know, in, implement more innovative, um, skills and technologies for their staff, then we're able to go in and assist with training those staff so that that employer can continue to compete in the market, um, today. So that's a really, um, beneficial program. We are, also have the on-the-job training. That allows us to, um, it's an incentive for employers as well as for us. Because what it does is we can have a, a candidate and say, hey, employer, we'll pay you up to fifty percent of that employee's wages while you're training them. So if you hire them, this, you know, this is what we can do for you. And so we have successful relationships with, um, Midwest Underground Technology Institute, Muti. Um, we do a lot of, uh, on-the-job training contracts with them and with their apprenticeship program. So that's a really neat one. And then, of course, apprenticeships are now, um, automatically eligible to be on our, what we call our, um, eligible training provider list. So I mentioned previously that we, the board, looks at different training programs and they approve it or they don't approve it to be on this list, which authorizes us to be able to pay for that training. So the, um, DOL came down and said, you know, your board can't decide this one, we're deciding for you. So any registered apprenticeship program of ours, DOL Registered Apprenticeship Program is automatically eligible to be on our training list, so we can pay for that training portion of that apprenticeship, um, for employers. And I think that's the focus with a lot, um, there, the new law is really focusing a lot on on-the-job training and apprenticeships, trying to get people working, um, ultimately is the, the idea. It's a lot of people don't have two years to, you know, go through a training program and, and upgrade their skills. Um, so we do have a, there's Apprenticeship Week coming up, the week of November the thirteenth. At the time this was created, we didn't have the final details, but I do now, for anyone that is interested. Um, it will be held on November fifteenth from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. Fifteenth, yeah. Yeah, so this was, we were going to have it during the week of the thirteenth, so I didn't have an exact date when this was created. But we do have the date, November the fifteenth, nine-thirty to twelve-thirty at Parkland College, um, in room D two four four. And so we're going to have, Julio Rodriguez is going to come down. He, uh, works with the department, uh, with the DCO. And, um, we're, it's kind of going to be focused on combining the workforce, um, programs, economic development, private sectors, businesses, trying to get everyone in one room to have these conversations around apprenticeships and how we can, uh, develop more in the, uh, business sectors or different businesses. Because apprenticeships are not, when you think of apprenticeship, everyone thinks of the labor laws and the unions and things like that. But there are other ways, um, that apprenticeships can be developed and utilized, um, in, in employment, so, uh, in businesses, I should say. Yes, Parkland College in room D two four four. You are welcome. Yes, the flyer come out. Yeah, they'll be getting a flyer out. Yeah, they'll be getting that out. On the current, um, the current approved apprenticeships? Yeah, we have, okay, on Illinois Worknet, you can go illinoisworknet.com. You can actually go on there and you, and view all of our approved training programs. All right, so. Talk a little bit about new initiatives or projects that we have going on. So we do, um, we are part of the Ready to Work, um, program that is going on with the Land of Lincoln, uh, Legal Assistance Project. And so they approached us a couple of years ago about really, um, providing some direct services to our customers that are having, um, barriers to employment due to legal issues. And so that are, um, things such as maybe they're lost their driver's license because of childcare and they can't drive and get back and forth to work. Um, we can directly refer them to Land of Lincoln who, uh, it's kind of streamlined the process for our customers. And they would basically work with that customer to alleviate that barrier. Obviously, uh, criminal records is a big one, so we do, um, work. When they're not doing the big event, and everybody's aware of the big event that just has taken place, um, when they're not doing that, they are hosting, um, these expungement events, um, every quarterly out of the Illinois Worknet Center, more smaller events, limited to about twenty people. So we kind of do the recruiting for that, um, from our customer base and kind of, um, help them to, you know, achieve that goal. Um, and so it's a direct referral for, um, source for our case managers. Whenever we're working with somebody and we just run into that issue, we've actually had that happen, uh, a couple of times with driver's licenses and child support. And they were able to talk with, you know, the state's attorney and things like that and work out a plan or a deal to where we can get a driver's license back, at least temporarily or specifically for work or training. And so, um, they would be there to advocate that for our customers because we're not, you know, equipped to be able to do that, unlike they could. Um, our annual job fair, we do partner with, uh, the Central Illinois Human Resource Group. Um, it's the annual spring job fair that happens every year in, um, at the Hilton. I don't know if anybody's heard of it, but it's been my, on like our third year doing that. And so we plan to continue to do that. Um, our agency, we provide, um, the actual job seeker resource room during the actual hiring event. So, uh, this past year, we had the whole basement of the Hilton, um, and we were there hosting, um, workshops that help people, uh, on how to get and keep a job. We help people with their resume before they actually, kind of a way to get them prepared before they actually head upstairs to the employers and, and meet with the employer. So my case managers, um, were available for that. Um, the Carl Hospital Supportive Service Academy, so I know Betty touched on this, um, a little bit, so I won't necessarily go into it, um, too much in detail. But I think they're doing a great thing with trying to really train, um, take on the, um, task of training their own staff, um, first. And so this academy, again, it goes over, uh, different soft skills issues and, you know, trying to train them before they actually are putting them on their actual job site. And so they are doing those classes out of our facility, the Illinois Worknet Center. We helped them to recruit this most recent class that they did. We referred, uh, candidates, they, they selected eight candidates in different, in three different positions. So their environmental service position, um, their housekeeping position, and then their store room, like inventory, um, clerks. So these folks currently are in the midst of that academy and they, it's a combination of classroom and on-the-job training. It's a ten-week academy. They should be wrapping up, um, in the middle of November and then they will be entering full-time employment, actually, on Carl's facility. They are employed right now and they're being paid. SNAP, that is the, um, food stamp program, so supplemental, um, nutrition assistance program. They still have TANF. Those are two different, so SNAP is the foods, the food base, so that's where you get the card and then you can buy food. TANF is a cash assistance program. So that's, um, targeted to, um, single parent, or not single, but parents. You have to have a child under nineteen in order to, um, receive the assistance for that. So. They would qualify for all, uh, TANF is actually one of our, uh, required programs. So as I, when I started, I mentioned, there's fourteen required, um, uh, programs of the One Stop System. So there's four that are required to be located together, um, which we're all in the One Stop. But then there's outside partners that all contribute to the One Stop. And so we do so through a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, and they talk about what services they're going to provide, um, in the One Stop and what services we're going to provide. So TANF is a, a required partner, CSBG now is a required partner, so Lisa has to give me money now. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of other, the Illinois Migrant Council, I mean, there's, there's a whole list. If anyone's interested in seeing how all of those kind of, you know, fit together, I'd be happy to send you some information on that. Oh, is that it? Okay. And then our performance for this year. So we served four hundred and eighty-eight clients as a, um, in our program, program year twenty sixteen, which is from July to June. Um, sixty-four of our docs, um, got employed, eighty-three of those retained their employment. Um, eighty-nine percent of our dislocated workers, um, got employed and eighty-two, oh, that should have said eighty-two dislocated retained employment. Um, seventy-six percent of our youth obtained a degree or cert, certificate, and so that could have been their high school diploma or GED or even post-secondary certificate. Um, sixty percent placed in employment or education and forty percent had the literacy and numeracy gains. That's it. Yes.
Yes. So my feedback first and foremostly is thank you. Um, this was a wealth of information. Um, I say constantly, we have a resource-rich community and it was really nice to hear all of the neat initiatives and services you provide, um, to our community, because that's huge, right? Um, I did specifically want to ask about the apprenticeship program. I work with several different educators who are working hard to keep our youth engaged and certainly help them kind of, um, think about what that career path looks like for them, whether it's education, apprenticeship, a trade, you know, whatever. So is this an event that would be open to like some of our high school seniors to come to or is this, do you have a targeted audience for this?
I think this is more so for the, uh, the planners, so like career counselors and the school, you know, so that they can see that this is a apprenticeship, is an option for the youth or for the community, so that we can educate ourselves. And then we can be able to push, you know, our, you know, the community into those directions, those that are, you know, eligible or that it would fit.
That's awesome to know because there are some staff members who specifically in our Champaign schools work with students around this work. So that's great to know. Thank you.
Funding actually supports the utilization?
Um, I think so. Uh, what would you say? I mean, what do you, I guess, yeah, explain that.
Do you have enough money to pay, pay for the projects and do you have leftover at the end of the year? Is there room for growth and development here?
So our, um, grant is a two-year grant and it kind of rolls over. So we do have some, um, some wiggle room. We enter a new grant year when we're at the end of another one. So, um, we typically have rollover every year of our, some areas don't have any rollover into the next year. So, um, I would say, yes, our funds, we did receive, uh, about a, um, five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase this year in some of our funds. And so that will allow for us to, um, take on some, you know, some of these other projects and, and that kind of thing.
Sorry, uh, could you, uh, briefly define retained employees? Does that mean they, they have the same job or what exactly?
Correct. That means they're retained their employment. So we look at, um, these particular measures. They look at when and, and if a person was employed, when they exited. So it's usually the first quarter after they've exited, so after three months, that's when we count them as employed, first off. And then retained employment will be at the nine-month mark that they've been on that job.
Oh, so you, you track them for a while?
Correct.
Okay.
Under your youth services, you say you provide mentoring. Um, do you provide mentoring through the programs that you, um, I guess you, um, contract with?
Correct, yes. The providers, yeah. The, that's what I said, with the youth services, we contract out those services because it's a lot of services that, you know, we're able to do and provide and they need a lot of support. And so we could not do that probably in-house in the Champaign County. In our outer counties, we do take on that task. We don't have as many youth, but in the Champaign County, we do, um, contract out.
We also look at them as, um, experts with youth. And so they, they have a, a broader, you know, experience with youth. I mean, they can offer more, so we'd see that as a, a very valuable service in contracting those out to the youth providers.
It's a way to leverage, leverage the funds because our funds do not only support their, their coprograms. That's one of the requirements of the RFP. They have to show how if they do not have our funds, could they support their program? So.
Asking me to join this more. So are, um, formerly incarcerated individuals eligible for all the services that you?
Absolutely.
Do you have some sort of specialized, um, that it's the job, um, finding and finding employers willing to, do you have some specific context?
Right, so we work with, um, IDES and they usually work, um, they have the, the re-entry workshops that they have. And so they pull in people and they actually give them resources on, um, different employ- different employers that will, you know, hire people, you know, with, with records and backgrounds. We work closely with Land of Lincoln for that population and then we have our job club that is basically going over the, I mean, we start off in the beginning from your voicemail on your phone, you know, getting that changed and then your email address, you know, hottie29 is not going to do it. So we kind of change that, I mean, we really go at the basics so that, you know, a lot of them have been out of the workforce for a long time or they're just, you know, getting back into the community.
Have capacity, I mean, you have room for, rantool, our challenge is transportation. And so, you know, we, we, you and I have discussed this before and we'll discuss it again now that it's back at the top of my mind, but how can we help get the word out to potential participants in your programs? I mean, we, this is a lot of good information that I just didn't know, so.
On to the high schools and to the counselors and talked with the rantool and I just think that's something that needs to happen, you know, more often probably because a lot of times you have, you know, staff that may turn over or into, you know, going to different facilities and then.
Outreach to the.
For the youth program.
Right. So we can help you get the word out.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to Rita has our planning and community development.
Good morning. At this time, the majority of the PCD staff is working on preparing three grant applications. We are working on an infra grant application for the Village of Savoy for building gray separation at the intersection of Curtis Road and Donlap Avenue, also known as US 45. It's due next week. At the same time, we are working with the City of Urbana and the Village of Savoy and the University of Illinois and preparing two grant applications for two cherry use paths. One along the south side of Florida Avenue between Grace and Lincoln and one on First Street between Curtis Road and Windsor Road. These are two high priority projects for bikes and pedestrians. Then we are putting those two grants together to be submitted to IDOT for IT. At the same time, we started working on the Savoy Comprehensive Plan. The Village of Savoy hired us to do that project and at this time, we are collecting data, preparing the existing condition report for that project. Then most of our time has been consumed during the grant applications. We also wrap up the Curtis Road Corridor Study. On Wednesday, we got the final approval of the Curtis Road Corridor Study. This was an 18-month project from a national grant. This will be a demonstration project that will be on the website of the Federal Highway Administration and we are ready to do the summary to be put on the website. And as part of the implementation of that corridor study, we are doing two of the grant applications that we are writing at this time. Lastly, last week, we went to the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations AMPO Conference because we were awarded the outstanding, and here is our overall achievement for small and medium-sized NPOs. This is a national conference and the project that got the award is the sidewalk inventory and assessment that we developed here along with the web explorer for any agency or any person in the community to access and look at the condition of our sidewalk sidewalks and also accessibility in terms of ramps and conditions of the sidewalks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, Dennis.
This probably is a perfect time to just comment on my flyer that I passed out to you all. You might remember that about a year ago or a little bit more, Darrell Fausti and I came and did a presentation before the board advocating that the Boneyard Creek pathway from downtown Urbana to University of Illinois be addressed, completed, and planned. And this board said, well, we'd be happy to support that, but I think you should get the permission from the Urbana City Council to proceed. So we did do that and a resolution was passed, I think it was in May, supporting this plan. And since that time, our staff, our planning staff has indeed begun to work on the missing link really, which is the continuation of the Boneyard Creek pathway from the downtown, which has been planned in the past and part of it's been built to connect with the campus plan, which was built during the improvements of the Boneyard Creek, you know, 10 or 12 years ago now. Curiously enough, our city hadn't done any planning on that section of the Boneyard, I call it the missing western section of the Boneyard in Urbana since 1978. That was the last time that plans actually had been drafted. So we are in the planning process and it's pretty exciting because the designer in residence and the landscape architecture department at the University of Illinois, Katie Kazuska, who is new this year at the university and is working with our, our community development department and planning department, her students are working on a planning charrette basically for this pathway. So I'm just excited that this section of continuity of bike and trails in the county, especially in Urbana, is starting to become a reality. And we, Darrell Fausti and I talked with Bill Houlihan, who is from Dick Durbin's office. We had a walk-through about six months ago and he said that if the, if the property owners along the creek showed an interest in having their land dedicated to the pathway that he thought that there could be FEMA funds available in the future to help support the purchase of those properties. And we did a survey almost immediately afterward and all the northern property owners along the creek in what I call the golden triangle section, which is the closest section of this path to downtown, indicated their willingness to have their land purchased by FEMA if we could proceed with this project. Bill Houlihan said that we wouldn't be able to really make an application that's suitable to success unless we had a plan drafted so we, so that FEMA could see that the city had a plan and a vision. And he said that that's the only thing that would keep us from making an application in the coming year. And so having this plan now under construction, help, with the help of the design, designer in residence at the university, landscape architecture department, and our own city staff will take care of that. So I'm just excited to share that with you. We just had the dedication of the Kikapoo Trail from St. Joe to Urbana a couple, couple months ago, maybe it's been a month and a half. And I see this as a potential continuation of length that. So we're talking about planning. City of Urbana is getting on its, getting on the wagon here and trying to complete something that I think is a missing part of our overall community biking and trail plan.
Thank you. Is that any other questions, discussions? I think that concludes then our program division updates. Can I have a motion to accept and place on file the updates from all of our various reports?
The law.
Motion for Pius second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that brings us to the end, so we can have our report from management reports.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. One of the things I wanted to touch on is in the last few months, this whole process of community engagement, engaging the community on what this agency does and has to offer. I do know that there've been various conversations going on throughout the community, workforce being one of them. And this is why we wanted to have Tori and Lisa present to the commissioners what it is the agency does as far as workforce and I know we have a lot of work to do as far as engaging the rest of the community so that there is an understanding of what it is we have to offer and if there are any gaps in terms of our services that we can engage the community to inform us on how we can effectively address that. So I know we've got this study and I know there've been some suggestions on some other areas that we need to look at. Certainly interested in, in working with you all to ensure that we do a comprehensive review of what we need to address particularly through this, this program that we have so that we are helping all of our residents that are in our community at large. Been working on really building a broad coalition of support for the agency. Already has a lot of support in the community, but being new in this role, been really going out and meeting with various individuals and building this broad coalition from federal level, state level, as well as at the local level. So there are some new boards that we have either rejoined or have been asked to serve on. The EDC, we just renewed our membership on the Economic Development Corporation and we've also been asked to serve on the Executive Committee of the Community Coalition. And I know that there are others that are involved in that here and so I'm going to be serving on the Executive Committee of the Community Coalition. Crater Career, which is another initiative on collective impact that various businesses, our agency, the university, I know the chancellor when I met with them, was very interested in this whole process of collective impact on how we can not only share data, but how we can collectively work to address specific areas that are areas of need in our community so that we can actually move the needle and not, you know, duplicating efforts without having real impact. And so I'm very excited to be, to be part of that. Been also have, we've had meetings with, you've heard, our members of Congress. We had Congressman Davis twice. We met with him individually. Thank you to Jim McGuire for setting up that meeting. We also had a meeting here with Congressman Shimkus and I think it was his first time actually meeting with our, with our agency and we did invite some of the board members who are in his congressional district to be able to share with them what this agency does in collaborating with their various communities. We've met with pretty much most of our state reps, Representative Kara Emmons, Senator Scott Bennett, Senator Rose and others, again, just to inform them on some of the things that we're doing and then getting feedback from them on what else they see as what RPC should be working on. We are working on getting both our U.S. senators to come to Champaign and visit some of our programs. Of course, Head Start is, is always a, a great program for members of Congress to visit, but we also want them to visit our workforce center and other, other things that we do within, within the agency. You heard about the initiative that is underway with Carl Clinic, the partnership that we are in the process of developing. There is great interest. This is going to be one of four pilots. Four counties that have been selected to be part of this project, so Champaign, Lake County, Sangamon County, and I don't remember the, the fourth county. There's great interest with the state and the governor. They're working on a press conference and we've been asked to participate with Carl on a press conference that the governor's going to be having on workforce. Details of that have not been shared with us yet, but as we know more about how we're going to work with Carl Clinic on addressing, particularly helping folks that are on food stamps gain employment, we will maybe be more comfortable to participate in that press Last time I think I reported to you that I've sort of been leading in the negotiations with our regulated utilities on resources that have been made available to them through legislation that was passed last year to do energy efficiency work. In Ameren, being the major utility company that provides services in our area, we have been, well, I've been in, in a lot of discussions with them on how to design their program. As a matter of fact, on Monday, there's a lunch meeting with the CEO of Ameren, Illinois in Springfield and our agency is going to be featured on how the utilities, particularly Ameren, can actually leverage some of the other services that we provide in our community and how those can be complemented with the work that they want to do with these energy efficiency resources. And I do want to point out that I think Ameren has made a concerted effort to actually carve out resources for us and their 26 other agencies in the Ameren Territory to build the capacity of minority contractors. We work with contractors to do weatherization services and they have an interest in building and getting more minority participation and they want 35% of their work to involve minority contractors. And so as part of their portfolio, they've set aside about $3 million to, $3 million a year that will be used to develop the capacity for that. But then overall, the Ameren portfolio as far as the weatherization work that we do, it's going to be about $15 million that will be shared among the 27 agencies in the Ameren Territory. And so that work is, is supposed to start January 1st. There've been some delays, there's been some other roadblocks that have been placed. A lot of interest for these resources by various other groups, but we are hopeful that in the next two weeks, we'll have a clear picture on how these resources are going to be deployed, not only in the Ameren Territory, but also in the other parts of our state for the next four years. Internally, we are particularly on the social services side, we've started to have conversations on how we can maximize what we provide to our clients or our customers by looking at even developing a seamless point of entry for when our customers come into our agency seeking assistance, that they don't have to come three, four, five times because they're being, they're coming for a specific program, but then they may not realize that there are other programs or services that can benefit them. And so we've started to have those conversations and I know at least one of our other departments has began to do a process mapping of their various programs so we can see where are some of the commonalities in what we provide and how can we develop a, an internal process where our customers do have this sort of seamless point of entry into our agency. So we are maximizing the resources that we have to assist them on their journey to self-sufficiency. So we're doing that before we even think about IT support. We have to understand what our internal process is going to look like, you know? We have to develop a cross-functional team environment where a person is trained on what the requirements are of other programs and services that we provide. So once we've accomplished that, then we can think about what kind of system do we need to get that can support this process that we have developed, developed internally. So very excited to be working with the staff in developing that. The other part that I wanted to share with you is part of what was presented to you today, particularly the last slide, which had some of the outcomes information. We're all being asked to demonstrate impact, demonstrate outcome. And internally, I think we're, you know, we're looking at how do we develop a culture of data, of working with data in all of our various programs? And how can we demonstrate impact? When we met with Congressman Shimkus, I know that, you know, he was interested in that because as they're debating our programs, whether it's in Congress or at the General Assembly, if we're able to provide information to our respective legislators that shows that, you know, for the resources that we received, not just, these are the number of people that we served, but what happened to those folks after, you know, once we've served them, I think is going to be very key. And it does take time to, to, to develop something like that from, before you even provide the services, you have to have an idea of what kind of impact are you trying to have with the services that you're providing. So that's some of the internal work that we're working on and we have others, departments that have done a very good job of that and we want to leverage that so that we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel. The last thing I was going to report on is that part of what we are going to also be doing is an organizational assessment. We want to look at, you know, various structures that we have, you know, how those work, the systems that we have to work with, those still as effective. And so we're going to be engaging our staff in providing us with input as well as having focus groups and we may be reaching out to the commissioners as well so that if there is a need for any changes to be made. to be made, we wanna have those changes to be informed, changes based on the data that we will be collecting as part of our assessment. I don't believe in making changes without fully understanding if the changes are actually warranted, and so we're gonna be going through that process, and hopefully, this will lead into developing a strategic plan for, for our agency. And so, very excited to, to working on that. The last thing I have is on the budget. You may have heard in the news that apparently the budget that was passed at the General Assembly has a shortfall, and so there are some, some cuts that are being proposed to be made, and I know we did get an email from Jeff Blum on some of the cuts through the Illinois Department of Transportation that may have some local impact. I do know that in one of the reports that I read, about, I think, $41 million was being proposed to be cut out of the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. I'm not quite sure where those cuts are gonna be coming from, because we do have a number of our programs that are through the department. Most of those are federal pass-throughs, so I would, I would hope that, you know, those would not be, would not be affected. We're also very curious as to how the federal budget is gonna be completed. I'm pleased to know that at least for our LAHI program, which is very critical at this time of the year, that the feds have released ninety percent of the funds that were for the FY 2018. So, that's encouraging, that, you know, those funds won't be, won't be affected. So, ninety percent of the funds for FY 2018 have already been released, so we're very happy for that. Other than that, I think that's basically what I have. Very excited to, and we will continue to provide any other additional information at these meetings on some of our key programs, so that, you know, we continue to engage you and get feedback from you on maybe some of the things you're hearing in the community that we're not doing, so that we are trying to address those, so we are fully providing comprehensive services throughout our community.
Thank you. All right, no questions for the council? All business? You business? I'm sorry.
But this, but I'm just gonna ask the question.
We'll put it somewhere in the middle there.
Just put it where the goats can get it, as they say. On CDEP, the CDEP Review Committee, is there, who's on that committee, and I guess I'm making a request, I'd like to be considered, if there's a slot on that committee, to be considered to, to be a member of that committee. And also, for the Youth Assessment Center, Lisa?
We're having an event, CUAP is having an event on November 2nd at 7:00 PM, and we're gonna be talking about violence, in particular, youth, young violence, and so we'd like to have someone from the Youth Assessment Center to, to participate. I will send you the flyer on that, but I think it's gonna be, it's a community dialogue, we're gonna have a panel discussion, but we're trying to get people from the community to participate in that, so I'd like someone from the Youth Assessment Center.
Thank you for the flyer.
I will definitely make sure you get that. Other than that, I think that was it.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, is there a motion, if there's no other business, then is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.